Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Before we proceed, are there any items to add to the agenda from the council side? Okay, then we'll go ahead with our consent agenda, and that includes approval of minutes from our February 23rd council meeting, resolution of employment in the Park and Rec Department, approval of liquor license for Pizza Hut, and approval of claims in the amount of $587,330.74. Entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Next, we have our public appearances. First one on the agenda is Jonas Magrum and Tom Christofiak. There's Jonas and Tom. Hello. So you're going to talk about a proposal, a proposed resolution to divest. So educate us.
Respected city council members, my name is Jonas Magrum. Tom Christofiak and I are here tonight on behalf of all citizens, particularly future generations, to present a resolution for your approval. This resolution urges the Iowa Public Employees Retirement and the Municipal Fire and Police Retirement Systems to divest all investments in the world's top 200 fossil fuel companies. Nearly 200 American and international scientific bodies have affirmed that our prolific use of fossil fuels is warming our planet at a dangerous rate. Not a single reputable scientific society anywhere in the world disagrees. These scientists warn that unless we begin to wean ourselves from fossil fuels, global warming will wreak catastrophic havoc on the world's climate. Anticipated consequences include decades-long droughts that will cripple Iowa's farming and manufacturing, a rapid increase in other highly destructive weather events, and the unprecedented proliferation of diseases such as Lyme disease, West Nile virus, malaria, cholera, all right here in Iowa. These and other dangers will plague our grandchildren and coming generations far into the future. We will leave reference materials that substantiate these claims. The fossil fuel industry is hell-bent on pushing our planet to the boiling point. It is time that we make a moral stand against this catastrophic future and the unimaginable human suffering that it would bring. We ask that you build upon Fairfield's exemplary commitment to a brighter, healthier future for its citizens. Please join the many forward-thinking cities, foundations, and universities who have passed resolutions urging divestment from fossil fuels for the sake of future generations. And please do not underestimate the importance of the example that you set. Tom will now read the proposed resolution.
I'll read it quickly. Resolution urging the governing boards of the city's pension funds to divest from publicly traded fossil fuel companies. Whereas the climate crisis is a serious threat to all current and future generations, and whereas the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change found that global warming is already causing serious disruption throughout the world, including the melting of arctic ice, the ocean's rise in acidity, flooding and drought, a finding supported by every major scientific society in the world, and whereas the scientific consensus is that any warming above 2 degrees centigrade arise would be unsafe, and whereas fossil fuel companies possess proven reserves that if they are burned would release five times as much CO2 as can be absorbed without exceeding that limit of warming, and whereas for the purposes of this order, of this resolution, a fossil fuel company shall be defined as any of the 200 publicly traded companies with the largest coal, oil, and gas reserves as listed at fossilfuelfreeindex.com, whereas the city of Fairfield has been recognized as a leader in energy sustainability, and the community has committed to a Go Green strategic plan. Whereas the city of Fairfield believes that investment should support a future where citizens can live healthy, prosperous lives without the serious dangers of climate change, and that the city funds and city employees' retirement contributions should not be invested in the fossil fuel industry, and whereas the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System and the Municipal Fire and Police Retirement System of Iowa, herein referred to as city retirement funds, have significant holdings in the fossil fuel industry. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfield City Council urges the governing boards of the city retirement funds to ensure that by January 1, 2017, none of its investments, including indirect and commingled assets, will include holdings in fossil fuel public equities and corporate bonds. And now therefore be it further resolved that the Fairfield City Council urges the city retirement funds to release quarterly updates to the public detailing progress made towards full divestment. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Fairfield City Council urges the city retirement funds to prepare a report discussing options to redirect the funds removed from fossil fuel investments into areas that support clean technology and renewable energy projects in Iowa to create a positive impact on the climate and to foster jobs and increase tax revenue for our state. And now therefore be it finally resolved that the city council shall send a copy of this resolution along with a cover letter to the governing boards of the city retirement funds urging them to divest their holdings from fossil fuel companies according to the terms of this resolution. That's it. And as Jonas said, we have some materials we'd like to leave with you, which include a number of things, but they also have a list of the large numbers of forward-thinking cities around the country who have already passed a similar kind of divestment resolution, as well as universities and religious organizations and so forth, and some other supporting materials about the harms that face Iowa and the world itself. Who shall I leave these with?
If they're for the council, you can give them each a little. So you're okay. It's fine. Or pass them through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, are you requesting that we take action on this tonight?
I don't know what your procedure is on this, whether it's something you would care to, I think I have a couple more. Whether it's something you'd care to investigate or discuss further, or whether, I don't know what the procedure is.
Right. Usually if there's, you know, it strikes me that something like this, we might want to refer to committee. Is the council open to referring this to Environmental Committee and something that, is this something that your committee would like to look at?
Sure.
Is it even possible for us to do this?
Well, we had a similar request. Yeah, we had a similar request come to the committee a few months ago. Remember they had something?
For the retirement fund, though?
No, something else. But, you know, we can hear them out.
John, is that even possible? I don't think we can tell Ipers or municipal police and fire where they can.
We can resolve, and we can request anything we want, can't we?
Yeah, we can pass the resolution, but we can't.
... representatives. Ipers is structured by the state statute, and so you might have some influence that far. So you could pass a resolution as far as it goes with your representatives. But it is a statutory thing, so the state would preempt us as far as our wishes. They definitely would hear our request.
It's possible, is it not, that Ipers, even though it's statutory, has discretion over where they actually place their individual investments?
But it's up to their board. It's up to Ipers' board.
And the point is, you're trying to influence the board through a resolution.
That's all. The wording just says that the city council, if she decided to approve this resolution, is simply urging those bodies to divest. It's not certainly, has no ability to require them to do so.
So if there's no objection, we'll pass this on to our environmental committee, and you can take it up at a future meeting.
Thank you very much for your time.
May I ask, after that, is there, would there be any further public discussion, or is this?
Well, the committee meeting is public, and then if the committee, two-thirds in favor of passing this, bring it to the council, then you'd have another chance to address the council at that point. So we're going to be meeting soon to discuss solar energy options in Fairfield. So if you get my email address, then we can be in touch.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rudy, I see your hand up. You know, to get on the agenda, you have to fill out a form and have it already published. You can't just bring something the night of the council and speak to the council. I'm really sorry.
I saw that happen last week. People just got up and voiced their opinion.
During a public hearing.
Yeah. We had a public hearing.
During a public hearing of something, yeah. So we do have a public hearing on one of our ordinances tonight. If you want to speak about that ordinance, you may, but otherwise we'll move on here.
Seventeen citizens signed a petition.
I think that's great, but again, the protocol is you have to have it on the agenda. I'm really sorry.
When do I get on the agenda for next week, then?
It'll be in two weeks, and you have to contact the, oh, there's a form that you fill out. That's what everybody else did here.
It's all forms. I don't want to be rude, but I'm a citizen. I should have a voice. Seventeen people want me to speak tonight. Two minutes.
But I'm sorry, we just, it's, this are, we have to follow our.
These are, these are state laws that we must follow, and it's not our choice.
We have to follow our procedure, that things are published ahead of time.
May I ask what it is that you're wanting to speak about?
It has to do with the construction on 600 Adams Block, which I did not grasp the full impact. And I have seventeen neighbors.
Now, we're discussing, we're discussing later a change in use or on a particular piece of property. Is it involving that?
Yes, sir.
The, there's.
I know it's a little while ago.
There's rezoning of 106 North Third, and there's rezoning of 106 North Third, second portion, but there's a public hearing on that. If it's not that address, then you need to get on, you need to get on to the agenda.
We are happy to talk about it, Rudy, but just, we have to go through a procedure. There's, there's rules and regulations.
They don't have to, but I'll respect it.
Thank you.
So two weeks. I sign up now, come back in two weeks?
You come back the second Monday in April.
No, 23rd. 23rd of March.
I'm sorry. Yeah, two weeks from tonight.
Excuse me, would you tell him what time, by what date he has to have the request in by?
The Thursday before, which would be the 19th. You have to, yeah.
Who do I bring it to, please?
Anybody in the front office.
I'm so grateful that you let me even say anything.
Okay, Rudy.
I understand protocol.
Yeah, thanks.
I get to go home.
All right. We'll move on.
I understand, and it's probably a done deal anyway.
Yeah. We'll move on here. Next, we have representative from Dennis Power Wagon here.
Thank you. City councilmen, councilwomen, the 28th Annual Dennis Power Wagon's Rally is fast approaching, and we are again asking your permission to block off the square on Saturday, June 13th, for our Power Wagon Parade. This event allows residents and guests the chance to see a unique part of American history showcasing the Dodge Truck from 1940 to 71. These trucks transported and supported our military service members overseas during World War II and the Korean War, as well as our farmers, forestry service, and firefighters back here at home. As in past years, we are asking the city of Fairfield's help with providing barricades to block off the square from midnight on Friday night, June 12th, until noon on Saturday, as well as support from the city and/or county law enforcement to provide traffic control for the parade. The parade would leave from the fairgrounds at 8:30 a.m., and we would aim to begin parking trucks around the square on the Main Street, Broadway, and Court Street sides at roughly 9 a.m. This event brings Dodge enthusiasts to our town every year, filling the hotels and campgrounds in the area, as well as supporting local businesses and restaurants. And we are very proud of our relationship that our town has with people from all over the world. We appreciate your past support for this event, and we look forward to having it again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've, this annual event, we have a motion to, or any discussion about?
Quick question. Are you asking to close all the lanes on those three sides?
No.
Just the parking on then?
No, just the parking on those three sides.
Okay. We've done this in the past. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hallie, second by Doug Flornoy. Doug, what's his name? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you. There are motion passions. Next, we have Zach Dean here to talk about also alley closures.
Councilmen and women, hello. My name is Zach Dean. I am the producer of a student film, a student named Monica, who is part of the Masters in Film for the MUM, and she is requesting the closure of the alleyway between Court and Main and Broadway and Briggs from the hours of 6 p.m. to 2 a.m. for a film shoot that she would like to achieve for her master thesis film.
And what's the date again for?
The date would be March 29th. It's a Sunday.
I understand there's two students you're speaking on behalf of.
Yeah, yeah. There's also additionally, this lovely lady here, Karen, would appreciate the ability to use the same alleyway, just the Broadway half, the side that's closer to Broadway, on the 5th of April from, she would like it, on the 5th of April from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. And then.
That's a Sunday, right?
That is a Sunday, I believe. April 5th, yeah. And then also April 4th for staging, correct? What were the times for that again?
That was from noon.
Noon until?
It's the table.
Okay. So the 4th of April from noon to 7 p.m. for staging, and then the 5th of April from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
And maybe you want to tell us a little bit more what staging means?
I think she wants, she has signage that she intends to kind of.
Karen, you want to come up and talk about it? So on April 4th, you're not intending to close the alley. You just want to decorate it?
That's correct. Staging is basically putting up signage. We're turning it into a 1930's Chinatown scene, and all the residents and the owners of buildings, of properties adjoining the alleyway have been informed and have approved us doing this. And then when we're shooting, we'll allow foot tracking. We can stop proceedings for that.
But you won't be shooting during the Saturday when the shops are still open?
Correct.
The afternoon before Easter, that would be on the 4th, you would be staging it, means putting up?
The signage and, yeah, just dressing, as we call it dressing. Basically, you're putting up Chinatown signs and things, and they'll stay overnight, and then the next morning we'll be, we'll start shooting.
And so you've spoken already to all the shop owners?
Yes, I did.
Along that alley, and you told them about your request?
Yes, and no, they're all fine. They're all closed on the Sunday. I spoke to the, is it Dottie in the little shop down there?
Yeah.
And the hairdressing salon, and also Sam Perron, who's the realtor for the other building, and they're all fine, so.
Any questions for the?
Does Dave see any issue?
No.
No.
Move to approval.
Second.
Motion by Flornoy, second by Ledger Kaelin. Please call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're all set to go.
Thank you, Senator.
And I'll shoot as well, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think we should probably take them separately, because they're two different, two different dates. So I think what we just discussed was the 4th and 5th.
Yes.
And so now on Sunday, March, what is it, 29th? Yeah, from 6 p.m. to 2 a.m. 6 p.m. to 2 a.m. Same, but this will be the entire alley instead of just the south.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, from Broadway straight to Briggs, yeah.
Move to approval.
Second.
Motion by Flornoy, second by Ledger Kaelin.
Quick question. If you're going to be filming late past midnight, expect to be making much noise? Is it a pretty quiet shoot?
Not any, not any, like, there's no sort of wailing. It's, it's a vampire film. A guy gets his blood taken.
Quiet vampire. I think he dies dignified. He's quiet in death.
Make it short.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, there's, there's no call for any loud music or loud noises of anything to disrupt neighbors. But I can see how that would be a concern.
So it's, you know, weeknight technically.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have a motion and second. Any other, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, you're good to go also, six.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now we'll get to our real business here. First on our agenda is a public hearing on our 2015, 2016 budget. Does, is anyone here to speak on behalf of our budget and make any comments on behalf of the budget, which is being presented, being up for approval tonight?
I think we'll go over it, right?
Open the public hearing?
Yeah, so I'm, that's what's on the thing, is the opening the public hearing. I want to know if anyone's here for that purpose.
I am.
Yeah. Well, we get the, we give the council plenty of chance to talk. So seeing no on behalf of the public, now we will take among the council. So perhaps before the council people make their comments, I think Mike was going to give us, you know, a review of the budget. That's what Ed had mentioned. You had discussed that with him. You're going to just give a little presentation to the public about.
Right. Thank you, Chairman.
Please do that.
Within the council, within your package, you'll find our certification of city tax. And if I could draw your attention to the bottom number, which is basically the city's portion of our proposed levy on our valuation minus the rollback. And that number is 17.16471. Again, that's our levy rate per $1,000 of valuation. That number is basically for the general fund. If you flip in your package to the next, you can look at our 2016 estimation of total revenue within the city. And this form includes all of our revenues, including the enterprise funds. Our total revenue estimated for 2016 is $19.74 million, and our total expenditures proposed for 2016 is a little under that at 19,024731. So essentially a $700,000 surplus within the budget. And those, that surplus largely will be set aside for some upgrades we have in the sanitary or the wastewater treatment plant. Some highlights of the 2016 budget include a 1% cost of living adjustment for staff, and that is for all staff except for the police department. And as you know, the salary survey was conducted for the police department and found that really our officers and our police departments whole is sort of not at market rate for other comparable police departments within the state of Iowa. So it is a proposed 5% increase for the first pay period of July 1, followed by another additional 3% increase in pay for the first pay period in January. Other highlights for the 2016 budget include a new squad car for the police department, a new loader, and crack ceiling equipment for the street department, several blocks of seal coating, the Libertyville Sanitary Sewer Project, a new storage building for the water department, a new airport terminal, and the rec center expansion project. Overall, our budget is down approximately 2.2% from the 2015 valuation, which was $17.00 and approximately 50 cents. And that is due to a 2011 general obligation bond that was satisfied this fiscal year. So with that, I would like to also give thanks to Joy and the staff. They put a lot of hard work into the budget prior to the city administrator arrival, and I certainly appreciate that coming into a budget that was ready to go. So thank you, Joy. I do appreciate that. With that, I would turn it over to the council for any questions that you may have.
Before we do that, I also want to concur, thank Joy for her good work on this. It was, you know, there's so many regulations and restrictions involved in preparing our city's budget. And Mike, you're learning from the best here. Absolutely. Joy has really done an outstanding job this year, pulling it all together and keeping us in the boundaries we need to be kept in. We have a balanced budget, and we've actually, you know, as you said, our levy's lower than, than it was last year. So those are very positives. And so, good job, Joy.
Thank you.
Jessica, you had some points that you wanted to make?
Oh, well, I just, I wanted to commend Joy as well, and then our city departments for really evaluating things. And I think they took some great care in trying to reduce costs and keep things in line. And that's always commendable when we're trying to be financially responsible with taxpayer funds. So, and I think we're going to continue to keep getting better and better at this and keep evaluating where we're at. And so.
Chairman, if I may add one more thing?
Please.
Another point of highlight is our evaluation was up approximately $1.1 million as a whole. So, and that does not include our rollback. So that's certainly a plus. It shows that our community is growing and becoming more valuable.
Any other comments on the budget?
One comment I'd just like to make is that as per Piper Jaffrey's recommendation of building up our general fund, I would ask that ways and means work on a policy to put in place that other cities have for how they budget, how they deal with their finances, because we could do a little better, I think, with the general fund specifically. And, you know, we are paying the price of having our, our bond rating come down, because we're paying more in interest. So we have to be fiscally responsible. So if something you guys want to work on, I'm not on your committee. If I was, I'd be in the trenches with you, but just making that request that that's something that gets looked at this year.
Good point, Michael.
Well, my plan is that we have it done by the end of the year or before that. And Mike's been looking at a couple of samples. I've looked at a sample. John, you have it on our next agenda.
Yes.
For a meeting to be determined yet, but, but we're going to work on that. We're going to work on the civic center issue that we're facing, and trying to figure out a renegotiation of that lease agreement, and what that looks like, and how do we take care of a building that we've taken on as an asset, and just explore all these different options with the situation we have of being very, being in a tight situation, so.
I think it's especially important now with the pending sale of Logan, because that is going to add, that, that's where we're going to get the surplus in our, in our general fund. And I think we have to be really prudent with that, because that is a one-time deal. That is not renewable. And, and so, you know, we, I think, all the more reason for very sound policies that we set and stick to, so.
But I don't think that's going to give us all the surplus that we need.
No.
Perhaps not, but.
It won't. And, and the money for that has already been allocated through this fiscal year's budget. It won't be able to be used in next fiscal year's budget at all, and any budgets from there into the future. And so if we're still carrying a negative fund balance, which I'm assuming we will at the end of the sale of Logan, then we're going to have to reevaluate how we're going to do it, so that we're no longer taking money from the enterprise funds, which are water and sewer, and transferring them into our general fund for use to make up those deficits that we seem to keep coming up with.
So many things that we had to consider. But we'll just see where it all, where it all winds out with the, with the fund balance. I'm not quite sure I agree with the, with your take on it, Darren, but we'll just see. I mean, we'll, let's just see it at the time. Any other comments about this year's budget? Seeing none, I will take, I'll entertain a resolution, a resolution to approve the 2015, 2016 budget.
So moved.
Motion by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Next on our agenda, we have a resolution authorizing the city administrator to act as a co-signing officer for the mayor, in lieu of the mayor, or as an attesting officer. Our city attorney's here. Do we have any comments on that? Is this a common thing that we, we need to put in place now that we have a new city administrator?
We did this because our other officers have responsibilities that sometimes cause them not to be here. We've had it in the past, but we want it to be specific to the office now, so we won't need to consider it. There are some things that are individualized, such as your banking resolutions, and we've done that with Mike, I believe. So this would just give him the necessary ability to be that person in lieu of our mayor if he's out of town or absent, or Joy if she's off at school or somewhere else. He can do the attesting. Over the years that I've been around, we've had a number of times when we've had the city administrator do the test or sign in the other capacity if the mayor's absent, so.
Okay.
That's the reason for having.
Sounds reasonable. Any discussion? Then entertain a motion, approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Flornoy, second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution approving the sale of, the purchase of land from Conger, the south portion of the Conger land.
That would be south of US 34, the portion that he has south. And it's for the sewer easements that we need for out there, both permanent and temporary. So I would move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. Before we actually vote on it, you know, I can't open my attachment here in a minute. So if someone wanted to just look at the amounts we're talking about, so this is an amount of $21,900 that we're intending to pay the Congress for that right of way for their...
Darren, none of these are any different than what we discussed in closed session?
No, none of these are different than what we had discussed in closed session. These are the finalized agreements that we had discussed.
That's right. I just want to read that out in public before we actually vote on it. So we have a motion by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
And next, we have approval of land acquisition, the north portion of the Conger property, the easement for the Conger property, and that is in the amount of $13,480.
And again, that's the area north of US 34 to bring this up towards the south end of Lamson Woods, not quite that far, but that gives you a general idea of where that's at. And again, this is for permanent and temporary easements on that property.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Flornoy, second by Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Next, we have approval of land acquisition from HFF LLC, and this one is $7,020. This is also an easement, is that right, Darren?
Yes.
Right.
Temporary and permanent.
The resolution's actually for both the temporary and the permanent, it's more than that, $7,022.
It includes the permanent easement as well, and the temporary.
And the temporary.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on it?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. Okay to just pull, okay to just do a all in favor, John, on this, or for legally, is it better to do one by one on Atlanta?
Do it, because you gotta run the motion, check the boxes.
All right. Then please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
And we have an easement from, is it Lila Williams?
No, it's a purchase. This is a property purchase.
Actual purchase of oil, yeah.
John needs to speak to this.
This one's been at the works for 10 months, so you've all heard me before. What you have is the resolution, and it's a little different than the rest of the resolutions you just did, which are all focused on land acquisition by the usual eminent domain process under threat of condemnation, but based on appraisal. This is based on an appraisal for replacement property, plus relocation and reestablishment costs, projections, plus the rest of what it takes to get a legal settlement in it, and my recommendation to you that you do a legal settlement. This is holding the train up, so to speak. So this is the primary spot for our large 5 million down retention basin construction, and we can't start until we have this at the bottom of the gravity flow. So to get this acquired and be able to go on to our assessments on our archaeological and history and environmental that we need to do, as well as the preliminary surveying and so forth, needs to happen this spring, and this will accomplish that. The recommended agreement for legal settlement is attached to this, and we've been in closed session several times. We came in a little under $400,000 for the total acquisition, which includes all of those different things that go into legal settlement. The agreement for legal settlement lists about eight different categories of legal reasons why you should do the legal settlement, and then it summarizes the terms of the legal settlement, including some things that we've done that are specialized to the fact that this is, this is different than some of the other takings where they're very limited in the amount of the taking. For instance, Mr. Congress is a partial taking, so if we would discover some damage later on, he has a right under the statute to come back and tell us. I found out you wrecked my culvert as part of this project, and I want to be compensated for that. And that kind of right that goes along with partial takings is no longer gonna apply in this situation. She's giving up all rights because it is a total taking. So that's another reason for the type of settlement it is. But at this point, we have agreed to allow her to lease back. It's important if we can approve this this evening, so we have a legal settlement agreement in place. We can then step forward to the next step, which is the leaseback agreement, whether or not that we have an agreement. We'll do the closing this month, have her execute the lease once we are in the position as the title holder, and then she is going to occupy it for as long as next October with one possible 30-day extension. And we will have access to the property for our purposes for engineering. So that's as good a deal as we can do, and I think we've kept you kind of abreast as far as the things that had a little bit of variation in this as we were going along negotiating it. But hopefully it will get us in shape so that any other easements we bring in, because we have about eight in one, I believe, in the next stage of this, and then we've got more at the backstage. Those are all gonna be a little different than anything that you've dealt with so far, which are bigger pieces of land that you've actually bought, either partially or completely in this situation. There will be a lot of easements coming through here over the course of the next seven months. But on this one, if you have questions, go ahead and shoot, because this is our chance to consider this publicly.
Well, John, we don't have a document in front of us, but there's this approval of land acquisition, so do you want to run the numbers?
Oh, you don't have the agreement?
Oh, yeah.
You have the agreement.
Agreement's on the back page of your, it's on the back of your resolution after the legal description.
This is substantively different than what we discussed in closed session.
No, I don't want to speak.
Pardon? This is not substantively different than what we discussed in closed session.
No, it isn't. All of these terms were discussed within closed session, so.
And this is within the budget we had for this particular portion of the project?
Right.
Under budget, though.
We've been under budget so far on all the easement acquisitions that we've done. This was the most complex of them all. This is, this is the one that I feel was probably the only total acquisition that we will really require for this project. The amount that we talked about for the leaseback has been kind of hashed back and forth. At one time, we had said that we wanted to see 650 a month, but I think the negotiation has been down from that to about the 450 range.
450 a month is what we landed on after we were back and forth at 6 and 3. We ended up in the middle, so we didn't think that would be the deal breaker in council. It was a consideration that we started the tenant prospects only at $100 a month, which was, I'm not gonna say it was ridiculous, but it sort of chewed me up a little bit as far as why are we there? And the other end of it was, I started at 750, which was what I told the council I knew. I didn't go below 6, and we eventually got up to 300 versus 600, and we ran it in pass, so we ended up splitting the difference.
So the agreement for the legal settlement can be approved with the acquisition portion that we have at the top here of this, all as one document, or do we need to...
Right. This resolution makes reference to the agreement for legal settlement as the document that you're approving. It has the price, it has the terms, it has the leaseback provision in it. And then we will bring you back a separate actual lease document and put it on your agenda separate from this after we own it. Right now, we're in a position where we're talking about something, we don't have title to go. So I have examined the title. Did that go over to you, Mike, already, the title?
I have not seen the title.
All right. Well, we have it examined, and it's a clear title. There's a couple more that are just being paid on, but we're in good shape to go ahead and have a closing at this moment. So I expect by next meeting, we'll be back to you with a lease, and we'll probably either be doing a closing concurrent with getting that lease approved, or we will have already bought it and will be doing after the fact on the lease.
But tonight, the proposal in front of us is to approve the land acquisition settlement for Lila Williams in the amount of $399,500. Is that correct?
Right, with the leaseback provisions and with the other terms for access, which take up the last, the center two pages of the one to six-page agreement, so.
And when you said the leaseback goes until next October, you meant October 2015?
October 2015. We indicated she could apply for a 130-day extension. Her attorney has also talked about the opposite direction. Should she vacate sooner and give us notice that she intends to vacate earlier, that would actually be, as far as our construction and engineering interests, even more desirable. And we would do some kind of prorated refund of some rent if that were the case. If she moved out in May instead of November, we'd definitely be at an advantage. But I don't think that's really gonna happen. We've had other things we negotiated as far as transplanting flower sets in the spring or the fall, the planting season, so I'm betting against it.
I would move to pass the resolution.
Second.
We have heard...
Boy, is there a very happy atmosphere. We have a motion by Hamilton. I think Ledger Kaelin was seconded on that.
Or Doug, what's his name over there?
Before we actually, before we actually vote, any final comments? I did have a comment. I just wanted to assure the public that the council has thoroughly reviewed this transaction numerous times in closed session, and we do feel that we've, you know, gotten the best deal for the city as, from what was available. This is a very key piece of property for our plans, for our wastewater treatment plant. And so, you know, I just wanted to say that to the public, just to kind of assure everybody that this was very thoroughly reviewed. It looks like John has something more to say, too.
Since you're talking about price, and we're talking about a total taking of land, we're also taking her residence, outbuildings, and some other things that are related to a business on the property. Business reestablishment is also a considered value in this, so you have a number of different issues that we didn't have with any other acquisition going on.
Right. So that being said, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Next, we have a public hearing regarding the finding no significant impact for step one of our sewer project. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of this matter at our public hearing? We have some people here to defend it, apparently, but...
Say something, Sean.
Before you do that, is anyone here to discuss it? Anyone else here to discuss it? Seeing no one else, it would be nice if you came up to the mic and maybe just told us what this is about and why we should feel comfortable with it.
So this is for the step one sewer project that John was just alluding to, that you did the property acquisition for. Basically, this is stating that they've found that there's no significant impact to wetlands, archaeology, endangered species, that kind of stuff, as a result of the sewer project. And so you just have to have this public hearing to let the public comment on it. So if you have any other questions?
Any comments from the council or questions? Okay. And we'll close the public hearing and move on to our next public hearing, which is regarding the rezoning of 106 North Third Street from R3 multifamily residence district to B1 general business district. Is anyone here to speak on that topic? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that public hearing, and then we will take up the second reading of the ordinance to rezone 106 North Third Street from R3 multifamily residence district to B1 general business district.
Before we vote, I got a call from Jeff Abbey, owner of the Fearful Lumber. He's in my ward, requesting we go ahead and suspend the rules and pass this tonight. He's got a pending sale of his business. I can't, can't go through until it's done.
Planning and zoning is already...
Planning and zoning, signed off, it went through that. We had, this is our second public hearing. Has anybody received any phone calls or anything about this?
No.
I'd say this is one of those instances, it's, there's no controversy about this, and I would move to suspend the rules.
I would second.
Motion to suspend the rules from Hallie, second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
I'll move to pass from the second to final reading.
From the first to final reading.
I got first to final.
Well, it'd be second.
This is the second reading.
We did the first last time.
I would second that.
We're going from first to second, so now we're going from first to...
No, we're going from second.
We're going from second.
We're on the second right now.
We did the first reading at our last meeting.
Okay. That'll be fine.
Joy, you got it, right?
I got it.
So, okay, so a motion by Hallie, second by...
Hamilton.
Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
And then we will open an additional public hearing regarding the pending utility rate increase. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of that? You sure? Okay. Then seeing no one to speak on behalf, we will close that public hearing and go ahead with the first reading of that ordinance. Darren, do you have something to say about it? It's come out of your committee.
Yeah, this is, this is the water side of our utility. It is a 10% increase for the city of Fairfield and a 5% increase for the municipalities that surround Fairfield that purchase water from us. And I would move that we pass this from the first to the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Hallie, second by Ledger Kaelin. Is there any discussion on behalf of the council?
We got it.
I'm sorry, Hamilton. Motion by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin.
Darren, do you know when that's supposed to go into effect?
This would go into effect July 1.
Thank you.
And depending on the reading of it, it would be either the first billing after July, which actually comes to your home August. And if we have gotten the wording corrected in it, then it should be the first billing after the first of July is when it is supposed to start. But I didn't see it until...
Is that too much waiting to put that in?
Right, right. We need to correct those. That was one thing that the ladies in the front office, the water office, had commented the last time we had increased rates.
I just had a question just before we vote. You know, I know this is part of a, kind of a whole plan that we've had to increase rates to, you know, match our revenue with the expenditures that we have in our, in our water department. But what's on the, you know, foreseeable future? I know we, you know, you had some plan mapped out, we're gonna increase this much at this time, this much at this time. Is there an additional water increase that we're gonna, we're looking at coming up after this?
There's going to be an additional sewer increase.
Sewer.
Coming in January of next year. These are all part of our step plan. The water side, we were a year behind on beginning our steps with it. We have, this is the second increase based on the step plan for the water side of the utility. We're projecting that we have a minimum of two, possibly three increases left.
In water itself.
In water itself.
I see.
We still have approximately five increases... We still have approximately five increases left on the sewer side. We've already done two. The first was two years ago with a major increase of 20%. Last year's was 10%. We're looking at another 10% again, unless there's a change in way that funds are coming in. We currently use $200,000 from lost funds for that. If it is changed in the fall to no longer do that, the increase will have to be, include at least $4.15 per household or per user here in the city to compensate for that $200,000 that will no longer be going there. So there may be a larger increase that we need to look at.
So there's a lot on the horizon here. Okay, any other comments before we vote? Seeing none, then the motion is second. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Florinai?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to committee and board reports, public safety.
I can fill in for Tony. I didn't know anyone was going to be here, but I've done this before.
Okay.
Wow, you are confident.
Well, we worked out almost the final details of the filming policy permit application. This will actually streamline and simplify the process when a local filmmaker wants to use a city street, or city park, or any city services, police, fire, whatever. So I think we're close, and we'll meet one last time sometime in the next few weeks and get that hammered out. The filmmakers still will need to come to council to request road closures, that's just standard. But the other, other requests will be handled internally and should streamline the process for everyone. Since we do have a filmmaking major at the local university, it's a good time to do this. That's pretty much it, Martha.
Okay. Economic development?
We just met this evening, and we discussed the South Main TIF area and potentially extending the road that we put in by Pilot Grove for, there's another commercial lot out there right next to Pilot Grove, and then across the street from that is a potential housing development. So we were just talking about that this evening and, and what we needed for infrastructure and that sort of thing. So we're going to be crunching some numbers on what that actually is going to cost and what kind of TIF revenue we have from out there already, and see if we can make the numbers work to potentially do that project this year so that the developer could, could start building. And then if the commercial lot's sold, then that could lead to some more.
Will it?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So we talked about that. We talked about some other potential housing development within the city and some different infrastructure needs that could be potentially coming. And then we also discussed the Home Based Iowa Program, which is an economic development initiative by the state and to bring veterans back to our community. So you actually become a, I guess, an approved or certified Home Based Iowa community. And so Mr. Hallie, being that he loves projects so much, is going to head up, taking over that project for us for economic development and so that we can become a certified, potentially certified, um, community, which means we have to have some employee buy, employer buy-in and that sort of thing. But Adam Pluggie's going to help us with that, and so is the Veterans Affairs Office, so.
Great.
So we'll hopefully be certified this year.
And that's it?
That's it.
Okay. Next, we're going to have a pool update. Are you doing that one, Mike? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. We did have a construction progress meeting with Burbak and Riccio on Thursday this last week. They continue to proceed on schedule. They're going to develop an updated construction schedule and have that to us in April. So we'll have a better sense of estimated open date at that time. Kind of the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see the zero entry portion of the pool. They're going to put a rebar and start to form that up for a pour, and they're also working on the mechanical building is framed up. So it's kind of the, the major progress, the major milestones happening at the pool.
Still on target for our date of opening?
Still on target as of right now. We're cautious to say that we're absolutely, you know, the spring will dictate a lot on how much moisture we get, but as of right now, they're still on target.
Okay. Good, thank you. Very good report. And see no further business to take, oh, is there further business?
We would have a rec center if you would permit, Chairman.
Oh, yeah, we'll do rec center update as well as. Okay. And there's some change orders that we're going to be considering recently soon in an upcoming special meeting.
Mm-hmm. We're running out of coffee.
That's right, go ahead.
Thank you. We're calling, just to remind you, last meeting, we talked about the gym project. Everything came under bid. One of the things we were considering was adding four additional hoops towards the gym project. If you can, the first figure you have there is about $56,500. That's what it's going to cost to add the additional four hoops, and they'll be adjustable from 10 feet to eight, eight foot. I asked how much would be left in contingency if this was passed. There'd be about $80,000 left in the contingency. So the task force is going to meet this Wednesday at noon at City Hall to discuss, to make a recommendation to the city council. And so far, everyone's able to meet Wednesday, so I think they're going to call a special council meeting with you guys with the recommendation so we can keep the project moving forward, because right now, they're on hold depending what we want to do with this item.
So this is just an idea at this point? The task force has to look it over and give their approval, or is that kind of?
Give the recommendation.
Okay.
And so that's what this change order, proposed change order meeting would be about, is if, whatever, if they, if the pool task force recommends this, then we should be voting on it. And you're saying the amount left, the contingency amount?
Yeah.
That meant the, because the bids came in so low, that doesn't have to do with the amount that we save for overage?
Right. If you were to, if the committee recommends the $56,000 and the US Council passed that, there would be about $80,000 left in that contingency for the project if there was any change orders going down the road.
But there's already built in his budget, he said a couple hundred thousand or something with change orders?
That's evaporated down to the $80,000 at this point. So, yeah, that's a big O.
Yeah, it does.
Because of the additions?
Because of the additions of, because the bids were so low, they chose to go with all the alternates, if I remember correctly.
Chairman, if I may, there are two contingencies. There's an under budget contingency around $136,000. There's also a change order contingency. So think of it as approximately $330,000 total contingency for the project. And this would be $56,000 of that.
Of the under budget.
Of the under budget.
Correct.
Of the under budget. So it still maintains this change order contingency.
Correct.
Yeah, that can't be.
So.
Yeah, I was not correct, what I said.
Okay.
I'm glad at this point.
Just making you aware.
All right. Well, we'll look forward to hearing about that later this week. Thanks, Derek. No. Any, any further business? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
By Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Okay.
Good job.